Welcome to our work session. The purpose of this work session is to review the current draft. Our question, there's interest for town planning and area support services. So Debbie supervisor, Coltrier, uh, put this together. Put this up and we're going around town. And we're just gonna have, the goal here is to kind of walk through this request. And have this, um, recording kind of serve as backing information for anybody that's looking at this. Uh, who's interested in submitting something. Um, and as an opportunity for both our co-press officer and our highway superintendent to add a little bit of exactly what there would be. Uh, when it comes to, uh, the services we're going to be able to bring in with this. Do you want to get some here?
So, um, we wanted to do is say that we, we call it engineering, but we, we go in and sort of not just engineering, engineering a plan. So we're gonna call it that. So, a lot of what we talk about is considered supply engineering. Apparently, um, working highway, designing, changing stormwater management, stormwater analysis. Some, some of the, we are a part of upstream of the flooding that we're still doing. Uh, utility compliance and a lot of these, those are some of the things. We realize we got just any needs on planning. We, the planning department, looking at that for those statements, not just code compliance. Part of that, uh, there you want, there's no one, or kind of how, what, um, design standards or permissionability, those kinds of. Um, comprehensive planning implementation, that's the planning part. But now this tenure is available, and someone you didn't have in charge, making sure we don't just keep them on. Um, and then funding, so knowing the grant writing, but if you write a grant, then you have a supplement. You can love, you can help do that. Some of which, of which I must say is extremely tedious and detailed. I'm assuming that it's really not something that volunteers are well suited to manage. So if you want something to do, it's very, very complex. So those were, if whether you define it as an engineering firm or a planning firm or some other kind of firm. Um, our, our thought is that there's more to it than engineer, just following that. Didn't meet, uh, already and was frustrated to the engineers, guys who think we're not engineers. So we wanted to kind of get together with that, say, this does not have to be a simple firm. It could be multiple firms, but some firms really specialize in grant work, others really specialize in highway work. We can, we can accommodate multiple contracts. What we want to do is see that somehow all of you have, I've accepted trust with one of the companies that we work with. So that's, that's kind of where we wanted to go and start. Um, and then the purpose of this workshop is to provide input from you guys. Uh, anybody that is, that is a forum, we're getting questions from the field that, that. So anybody, community that has interest in this kind of stuff. Um, we want to generate discussion with other things, um, for example, Elaine couldn't be pretty big, but she made sure, wanted me to make sure that. The sidewalk project would also add into somebody in the project, so we want to make sure we get that signed. Um, and other projects that we might want to do, uh, for the people, anything for the, for the inspiration, so if there's somebody. And we just say, hey, you're our solar guy, you should maybe do something like that. These are the kinds of things we want to make sure we get in the list under, so we're not squirmy at that point. When they, when they, you know, danger. But I'm, I'm. Um, and then we wanted to, we're gonna use this recording as a context for when the, um, request for letter of interest was released. That people will get their link to this recording to actually hear this dialogue and get a better idea of. That people manage whatever's got written on the page, which they have written. So that's the purpose. Thank you.
I'm gonna pull up, uh, current version of this. Exactly. So right off the bat, uh, we're gonna start with, okay, so we do have some pretty big history. Uh, but still, rather than just kind of reading this through. I think one of the real needs that, uh, the highway department has is having someone available. That he is local enough, so that when we see a drainage issue, uh, or some other issue pops up, we can follow that up. That way, highway superintendent can go take a look at it, get some pictures. But at some point in your future, we'll be able to have something turn on the scene to give us that engineering. Knowledge, so that when we look at what's the right way to remediate situations. That we're not, that we're actually doing the best practices, um, and. Making sure that an engineer has signed up on it to not only make sure that superintendent knows that everything is, uh, is proper. But also to get that confidence, uh, and I think this is gonna be a recurring theme throughout this, uh, request. Is that we do have a really need for local people that can be here on call. That can be in the community, that can be at the highway garage, we need it. Who would be looking preferably, uh, for four to eight hours of availability a week. Um, maybe people need that every week, but having someone that, and when drainage goes wrong, usually goes wrong pretty bad. Uh, and we need to get something done as soon as possible. And so a lot of what they're gonna be seeing, uh, highway requests is the understanding of their state, uh, highway law, land law. Uh, knowing the areas funded that they get, there's always changing rules with these funds. So ideally someone who is up to speed on what, on these can not be used for, to help us do that thing. Our, our highway superintendent pushing has a very good idea of how we use those. Um, but if there are opportunities to either use that money in a better way or a more targeted way, um, we're always. There's a lot of, um, uh, big documents that will be generated from highway for larger projects. For a firm that has that experience doing that. And, uh, I can see here is exactly their, uh, promptly valuable concerns, locations of public concerns. Uh, and grant engine recommendations, obviously, so that's that on the ground aspect. Uh, and then again, assist with ready funding proposals for larger projects. Uh, what we've seen is that, you know, as far as the regular maintenance, we, our, our department doesn't. But we need, see these opportunities for larger projects, funding is almost always gonna be a big spot.
Works for right now, but having someone, a planner, who would be the main point of contact, who is well versed in the comprehensive plan, who understands all the general processes of zone changes, uh, site plan review subdivisions, also variances through the zoning board. Um, someone that would be able to sit down, especially for these larger projects. The smaller ones, where there's a, you know, a good engineering firm on board already that already knows our process, might not need that, but when we have something that's very large and could take a year or more to see the whole thing through, having a planner to sit down with originally to say, hey, this is our process, here are all the forms you need. If you have questions about design standards and the comprehensive plan, that's something that I think would be incredibly helpful, because if it's not for one kind of central person, the project can easily fall to the wayside and having that main point of contact, who wherever they are in the project, they know they need a zone change, talk into the planner and then having the planner explain about our specific zones, that they're, how they're different from other towns. Uh, work in, um, you know, our process as we move through that. Having that planner as that kind of catchall person would be incredibly helpful to some of these larger projects.
And they wouldn't, so the initial phone call happens and someone says, we're interested in doing this. Okay, so we'll, myself or Lisa maybe, we walk them through the very general specifics. Once they have something tangible that they can submit, okay, now you're able to move to the next step. We get calls all the time where someone wants to do something, but they don't submit anything tangible. So, once you get that tangible document, then we can move to the next step with that. And the person that does that would also be kind of the point of contact for, hey, I have this question as a planning board member, or myself, or someone with us with the the town engineer, where does this stand within the project tracking? Where do they, or either, I mean, the counselors want to know, where does this project stand? You have a point of contact to easily say, here's the project tracking for these larger projects. This is where they stand within the process, because they may be coming to you going quick, going back and forth with all these, where, what's the timeline? We have that type of tracking and that person would be the tracking the project for them and giving them that information.
Is it, sorry to interrupt, how does it work now? When somebody's reaching out to the planning board and you, you just have to ensure that, um, you have, you're just chasing each other to make sure that you have the most recent information?
It depends on the project. Uh, some projects, uh, like I think the A and E spa, uh, they came to me because they needed the zone change and they wanted to move that forward and then we handed them off to the planning board. Um, but this is, this is exactly for that, to make sure that whoever they reach out to first, whoever gets it can say, I can answer some questions, but your first order of business is to schedule the time to meet with our planner.
I don't think there's any faults in our current system. I think we got great, uh, ways of communication, but making it more seamless, just we can, we can make the process better.
Thank you.
So that would be, and this, that's really in the, the planning and development. The code enforcement end of this, what I would be looking for is when these larger projects come through and they have a hundred pages of plan with whether it be mechanical plumbing, uh, life safety, all these, all these plans having, sending out some of these more heavily calculated aspects of a a commercial bill.
And I think even structural, I mean, not to pick on them, but the A and E, you know, the, the grading issue there is like somebody who can look at that and actually say, is this sufficient?
Yep. And a lot of the times it's going to be tomato, tomato, but at least we brought our, if, if, if we like, I'll have concerns, I'll bring it to their engineering firm and they'll be able to address that. But at least then we, I put their concern, if there is concerns or questions about how something's happening, or how did you, what was your code compliance path to get to this end result, they can share it to me. How did you determine this was what you were going to use for such an aspect within the bill? And they can then give it to me. That, that is very helpful with the, the larger, especially with the change in what will become the energy requirements. Hat, New York State was already offering third party through NYSERDA, third party, um, review and inspection. So we're kind of, you know, we looked into that. Uh, we're kind of bypassing them and allowing some of these larger ones to be reviewed by outside specialized firm that does energy compliance. Uh, again, what I will look for onsite too is more general questions in regards to uh, the flood plains, floodways. If I'm questioning where something is, I would like the person to have experience, whether they're a certified floodplain administrator or they have some type of floodplain um, review background, but they're able to work with myself in regards to development within the floodplain. The wetlands is a whole different issue, but you kind of, you know, where we're getting these developments in these areas that at least I can ask the questions to, someone in that field can just, we can have eyes on some of these more critical areas that if you're developing on a, a place of fifty miles away from the floodplain, we're not too concerned about, but if you're, if you're going to impact it or have that person impact, let's make sure it's done right once and there's no other questions. Especially in some of these subdivisions that are going into areas where there's multiple pieces to retention basins and infrastructure going in that is done right. With that, uh, the couple of items that I had was coordination with other departments, especially the highway supervisor, because there's times where I will have to, for something to happen, it will have to go through Rob and the engineer, so having engineer in a sense, because they, the highway department does stormwater management, having the engineer be the same that works with that, or at least they have their, they have to be pretty much constant contact with each other to, and myself for projects. The other one, and I don't know if this is in somewhere else, I put that the firm would interact with the GIS information system to produce new maps or zoning, update, whenever there's a zone change or is it our map link is updated within a, within a timeframe. Or some of these mapping systems are updated or created and we can work with them. Whether, and I'm not sure what we have, I know there's the, the V and L study, but that we have access to updated maps in a, in a manner which we can easily access here at the town for review.
I think a lot of what we're looking for, um, from that aspect is expertise when we need it. Um, and we don't have to justify sending someone out with training or hiring someone new. That's really, really where I think in the last few years we've understood that, you know, you know, in a perfect world where there'd be one person or two people we could hire to do these things, I don't even think so, because we're looking for two hours of this expertise every week, two hours of this expertise. And so that's really where we're looking for a solution where we've got someone or a team of people that can be, um, with, within, you know, uh, uh, whether it's a day or two to get in touch with them, bring them on site, take a look at things and really help us. Um, I think move, remove some of the hurdles where, you know, maybe with a, a different setup, we would have to send something out and wait two weeks for a response. Ideally, we have it so that we can kind of get some, some guidance in the short term, so we can keep things moving along. Uh, and one thing in here too is facilitate the implementation of the neighborhood sidewalk program. So this is something, uh, that counselor Denko put together, um, that we are hopefully releasing very shortly, uh, that we have a number of areas within town uh, that are generally speaking, right outside or, or near to the villages, where residents are very interested and passionate about getting sidewalks for a number of reasons, safety, mobility. And, you know, this is something that I think, at least in my tenure here on the board, we've had multiple presentations, sometimes by middle schoolers, sometimes by fa- uh, families. And this is, you know, our best shot at trying to figure out how to do this. In villages, it's a lot easier. The whole thing is the sidewalk district. You can put sidewalks where you, where you think they're appropriate. Um, so what we, the, the sidewalk program, the core of it is we are, we are, we've set aside some money so that when residents petition their own neighborhood and sell the idea of a sidewalk, so rather than having the town say, we want to create a district and build a sidewalk and, you know, make that happen, we want the residents to convince their neighbors so that it's a unified front when it comes to building the sidewalk and, and, you know, taxing for that new district. And even just creating that. Um, and so what the money we have set aside for is so that once the petitioning and the signature gathering portion is done, that the residents have access to funds, almost like a grant, to then, in, you know, uh, engage with our firm or another firm to generate a map plan and report so that we can move that process along.
And also actually apply for grant funding.
Exactly, exactly. Um, so we are ideally looking for, uh, somebody that has some sidewalk expertise, some understanding of district creation to help us along with that, but then also to just the actual oversight and building of a sidewalk. Um, and then also ideally, uh, you know, a team that can help us envision what the sidewalk looks like, communicate that clearly to the residents and make it a lot easier to understand, what does the timeline look like, what does the cost look like, what is, what is the long-term cost of this project? So that way, when our residents are going out and talking to each other, they can give really good, solid information that everyone's brought up to school.
And I think also in that area, knowing where who funds sidewalks, what time of year that application comes around, you know, all that stuff.
Yeah.
Because that there's a couple of programs that were specifically for sidewalks and then there's others that you have to compete with roads and bridges and things, a little part of it, yeah.
And we can also apply to the county. Um, for, for support as well.
Yeah, and ideally, I know we, you know, we don't have someone here at Town Hall who does sidewalks. So we're looking for someone who does sidewalks.
I'd like to invite Superintendent Cushing to make any comments if he does have any drafts so far.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry I'm not there tonight, guys. Obviously a little under the weather here, but, uh, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Unfortunately, John, the, the, the sound wasn't all that good. I couldn't hear. So if I repeat what you guys already said, I'm, I'm sure you guys kind of already went down through everything, but I had left my notes at the office, but just during the conversation here, I've had so several, several years that I've worked with the town and I've worked with different engineering firms over the years. Um, you know, local outside engineers have come in, done work, um. You know, one of the big things that, that I, and, and that I've seen is there's certain things that are always going to kind of come up back around to work with each department, meaning, you know, with code enforcement right from beginning of the planning department, with planning and development. Um, when there's these developers come in and set up a new, a new development, um, you want to have that same engineer working with the town highway superintendent and working with Tom as far as when the building of the homes come in. Um, typically we work with the same developers in the town man list, the local developers. Uh, we've had a few that have come in over the years, um, you know, and we've had, we've had some issues on, on either side, you know, meaning uh, things didn't get done, uh, properly and we had to go back and, and stop some projects or we had to go, you know, and make sure that they understand what our policies and, and procedures are. And those are all written, as you guys know. Um, but I think a couple of the things that, that maybe weren't mentioned, and I wanted to make sure we mentioned this, or when I, when I deal with an engineer, we have certain, uh, uh, regulations that we have to follow with the highway garage, meaning our guys have to be trained with fuel response stuff. Um, so it'd be nice, we've always kind of had our engineering staff do that before in the past. Uh, we also have our oil water separator in our building itself, as far as the salt storage shed, obviously the boards work with that with last engineers. Um, so those types of things, you know, you're going to want to keep, um, keep the engineer kind of underneath that same, same umbrella, if you will. Um, you know, one of the things that I've noticed as a highway superintendent, you know, when you go out and I don't know, I'm assuming the board probably has the same type of situation. When you try and talk to residents, certainly, uh, when the emotions are always, always at high, um, or at least that's when I tend to be dealing with people. They don't necessarily want to hear what, what our policies are and what, what the issues are. Um, so to have an engineer who can be onsite in a fairly quick amount of time, um, who can help explain the town's policies and what, what the do's and don'ts are from the state regulation side. Um, and what we, we are required and not required to do. So, you know, and maybe even taking that a little, another step further is educating our residents, you know, on our stormwater issues. So, um, you know, I, I sat with Sarah, um, a couple of the other members on the Stormwater Coalition Committee this year. Um, I think a lot of residents learned a lot of things. I know I did some, some learning. Um, you know, so we're kind of on the right track and it'd be nice to have an engineer on board that can kind of take that, that as a, as a yearly thing or even uh, and every so few months, um, kind of push that forward with our residents for, for that portion of it. Uh, I know Tom had mentioned, you know, we kind of cross over quite a bit. Tom will call me. Um, I'll call him, whatever, with certain situations, people will ask about tying into our infrastructure as far as with their, their salt pumps or those types of things. And, uh, you know, under highway law, those things come in, um, where you know, sometimes I, we're always going to have a policy. The town has a policy about tying in. The highway superintendent has to okay it, but I'm always going to refer to my engineer, um, to look at those things. Um, to decide whether we're liable, you know, there's a liability for us in any way, shape or form, not only with illicit discharge stuff, but if something happens with our system and goes back into the residents, that we're not liable. Um, you know, dealing with some of the big projects, the stormwater projects, um, the highway department has always overseen kind of the, the drainage with the drainage districts, we're working with the town manager, um, and the engineering firms, whoever were on board. Um, to try and put these projects in a, in a, um, kind of a five-year plan. Um, what I've recognized over the last ten or twelve years, most of our infrastructure in the Manlis area has been built in the late eighties, early nineties. So unfortunately, they were built with that steel single wall pipe and a lot of it is deteriorated, um. You know, so we've been taking steps, the board has taken steps, obviously, to spend some of the monies, uh, to rectify those things. And I think we're going to need help with that in the future with an engineer to kind of lay those projects out. Now, some we may be able to do in time, some we may be able to, to, uh, reach out and have them lined. Um, and then some we may, just like we've been doing in the Clark Hill area, have to replace it with the ADS. Um, so those are a bunch of different facets, I guess. And I, I think you guys touched on most of them. Um, you know, one of the other things that I wanted to mention too is, is we've kind of talked about it over the years. Um, it's kind of, it, it, it's got some cost to it. But for the, for the next highway superintendent coming in, it'd be nice easy transition. A lot of highway departments are starting to video their roads and conditions of their roads, not only for signs, but for actual condition of the roads. There are some programs out there that these engineers are working with, um, and a lot of the engineers know how to kind of lay that out. So that might be something else. We also want to kind of pencil in for something, uh, you know, down the road here. Um, other than that, I think you guys have basically touched on anything. And if anyone has any questions, certainly for me, uh, feel free.
Thank you.
Best in this.
I think I would add to that, the, um, we had talked about the G, you had mentioned the GIS, it's the GIS mapping of the infrastructure. So having all of the retention basins that the town is responsible for and things like that, it's just to have somebody with the expertise to.
Yeah, I didn't know. We have data, kind of in various places. You know, we did our best to get that built up and running. Uh, there's still a very manual, uh, facet to that. And again, any expertise in GIS that would help us kind of set up a more automated system would be incredibly helpful. And we are looking at um, a larger kind of internal piece of software, like general code. I know they offer something where we would be able to implement it that would help the planning department, the highway, uh, the assessment office, the tax office and all these things. So having expertise in, in implementing those systems and using those systems and also extending off of them, you know, maybe there's a hook there that if we do the right thing, you know, a couple hours of work, we can offer another code facing benefit the residents, any expertise in that is going to be helpful. And any, you know, understanding of those pieces of software to help us find the right one for us would be helpful as well.
And things that are, that are, where a resident can actually understand.
Yeah, yeah, like when we put out the, the zoning map.
Yeah, people figured that out really quickly.
Yeah, and it's, it's a great tool. And what it does is it takes a very complicated system and then says, why don't you just look at your house and see how it's zoned? And then you can go see how town center is zoned. And you, it, it, it's an hour of conversation about zoning in of just a few minutes of just kind of playing around with it. And so we, we are very interested in finding more of those solutions, uh, to offer the residents. Um, yeah, that, we would be looking for any assistance in that.
And I think you, you had mentioned that being able, because, I don't know, we're up to four or five zone changes that we made on parcels this year to make sure those get in the map, in the timely map.
Councilor Cruz, over to your hand. You'd like to be elevated as speaker.
All right, we should be able to hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I, like Rob, I was having a difficult time at the beginning hearing. It's been definitely way better since you restarted the hours. Um, but I wondered if anything had been mentioned about like the climate smart communities and clean energy communities programs and how the, how the planning, how having someone in planning might be able to support those ongoing efforts to continue those programs and to take on new actions and support the Sustainable Manliness Group.
Yeah, so we've got an item, um, two of them actually under planning and development number six. A C and D participate with Sustainable Manliness Community Group uh, and assist with implementation or replicating for Climate Smart Community and Climate Action Plan requirements. Um, and so I think to anybody looking, uh, to send in a proposal, having expertise or at least experience with those programs would be great. Um, we've got some great partners, but having someone on hand uh, to, to, to help us with that. Uh, I know a lot of times there's something, there's kind of like a, an idea of, oh, this must be work points or help us get something. But having some experience with that, especially if it's the person who would be, uh, in the planning role to help us work with developers to say, hey, these are the values that we have. We would look for these things in your developers. I have no doubt that that'll be something that's kind of outlined through the comprehensive plan. But having that expertise, understanding our plan and then helping us work with developers to kind of bring everybody together around those shared goals and values would be helpful.
And Councilor Cruz, you mentioned this Climate Smart Community and Climate Action Plan, but I think I didn't include the, the energy one, what's that called?
So there, the, um, it's the Clean Energy Communities Program that's through NYSERDA. And, uh, then the Climate Smart Community Program. We are currently bronze, but we could, um, we could pursue silver and, um, and that's through the DEC. And then the Climate Action Plan, that should be wrapped up in the spring, so it probably would be less applicable. Um, that's the sustainability component of the comprehensive planning, um. But, and like, we hope that that's included in the comprehensive plan, once we are, once that's finalized and we pursue adopting it. Um, so it's, those are the two main programs, but who knows what'll be coming down the pike or what opportunities might come up. So I'd be very interested in, um, hearing from whoever applies how they're going to support new sustainability initiatives. You know, there's the, there are so many different opportunities, including the stretch code and how that might be adopted. Um, and with the Inflation Reduction Act coming down from the federal government, there's going to be new money from there and then the bond, the Green Bond Act in New York State. So like, what money is available? How can we pursue it? And how can we continue to be a climate champion in the town of Manlis? Those are things I want to make sure we stress in, in evaluating whoever responds to um, and presents us with a proposal.
Okay, great. Thank you. I will amend that.
And I think, yeah.
I was going to say, um, the, uh, councillor Taliano, who is a member of the tree commission, um, mentioned this and it, right now, the tree commission, of course, is formed in partnership with, um, the highway department and so, and our highway superintendent and the forest plan that the town has there, but we also align with the Climate Smart Community standards. So we'll work with you to, um, add in language that mentions the tree, for example, with the GIS mapping. That's a really, we want to make sure.
Tree inventory.
We're, exactly. The tree inventory is, is like another piece of infrastructure for us, right? So, um, and it's useful for our alignment with the Climate Smart Communities applying for support from and for our support streak program, so.
And I think that brings us really nicely to number nine, which is grant funding. Uh, so this is something that I think touches every other aspect of this request. Um, we, as the town of Manlis, as the current town board, um, do our best to look for grant funding, um, but having a firm that understands what our goals are, understands our comprehensive plan, understands our sustainability goals and can help us identify those grants that are worth the time to apply for. And then again, the management side, which is very important. Again, if this is the same firm that's providing planning assistance and grant assistance, that is incredibly helpful so that when we do have developers come in, or, you know, if there's a county program or state program uh, for whether it's a main street or near it forward or any of these things, to have someone who knows all of those things and during a conversation with the developer or with the Sustainable Manliness or even through a planning board conversation to say, hey, there is something we can, we can investigate a little bit and see if there's money that is available. Um, and then I think maybe one of the biggest, um, struggles that we have with that is the cyclical nature of grant funding and making sure, a lot of times what we will do, I think we've been in this position a few times, where we'll say, oh, I'm pretty sure there's a grant for this. And then we'll find out that the application period just ended. And then making sure that by, whether it's a six-month or a twelve-month cycle, that we're ready and prepared for that next opportunity. Um, that is something that I think we would all greatly benefit from. And it's a direct way to also make clear to the residents that investing in going after these grants pays dividends, because then you'll see all that money, um, you know, beautify our, our town and help us move forward. So.
I, I think that's relevant to, um, everything here, but we have an interest, and we're lucky to be able to um, leverage support from, uh, county planning, um, to, to kind of work in tandem, um, or in partnership with with the B and L, for example, the comprehensive plan and the Smart Communities. But, um, I think we have a need broadly, so as, this is good, I think, for the town board to consider our needs for grant support and grant writing broadly, because I think we could look at, I think we can look at other aspects of what we do and, and be supportive in that way. But this is figuring out how to do it and what works through, um, a relationship with a firm, um, that has project management focus, um, is, is a great thing to do.
Uh, and then last but not least, um, engineering services for the planning board. Uh, they, uh, do have, uh, their own engineer, um, and we would be looking for any good parties that would be interested in providing that service for our board. Uh, they do meet, uh, up to twenty-four times a year. Um.
It's, it's a piece of work.
They have been busy. Uh, we expect them to continue to be busy. Um, and I think with the planning board in specific, having, uh, a good understanding of the town of Manlis itself, the rules and regulations that we have, uh, all incredibly helpful to the planning board. So again, we are nine minutes to six. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to add? Any final questions or points?
I think with the planning board, that, that engineering that is done there, if it, if the engineering firm differs, that when it goes to Rob, that there is that, there's no lapse in what was discussed there and there, they know exactly what was discussed. Well, that transition from, moving from your planning stage to your implementation stage to your final um, notice of termination with your stormwater inclusion strategy plan is all, that is a seamless process. Because there's a lot of different people involved with it, a lot of different checkboxes that have to be parked off so that you get through that without any issues.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will, uh, likely make some changes to this. We'll make some modifications. Uh, I will, uh, edit out our technical limitations. I'll make sure we get this out. Uh, and our plan is to include a link of this, uh, in the request that we publish. Um, and we are hopeful that the app, uh, any potential applicants will watch this. And, uh, it'll help them provide a better proposal. So, thank you, everybody. And we'll reconvene for the town board meeting in about forty minutes. And uh it'll help them provide a better proposal. So thank you, everybody, and we'll reconvene for the town board meeting in about forty minutes.